Before we get started, I do want to say that Ms. Bitter Smith has been detained at a Scottsdale City Council meeting. And so in my role as Board Secretary, I'll be convening and running today's meeting. So with that, we have a couple items to attend to, and the first one will be our public hearing for consideration of adoption of our charter high school budgets for fiscal year 2025-26. And with that, as we are live, I haven't done this in a while, excuse me, as we are live captioning our meetings, please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. And so, good evening, and now I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of June 24, 2025. And for the record, I will call, roll call of board members. Want to make note that Ms. Maya Jackson Long is still on her study and is not present. And other than that, we'll move on to Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Bitter Smith is absent, and with my presence, we have six board members present. We are here to take and read public comments regarding your proposed budgets for Gateway Early College High School and Phoenix College Prep Academy for fiscal year 25-26. Given that this is a public hearing, Ms. Macias, do we have any public comments regarding the charter high school budget? Okay, so with that, then, are there any comments from members of the board regarding the budgets for Gateway and Phoenix College High Schools? Okay, being done, given this is a public hearing, I am now going to adjourn the public hearing of the Maricopa Community College District. So this concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. We will now continue to our regular board meeting, and our meeting has adjourned at 6:36. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank my smart watch.
Thank you, smart watch. All right, now, we will move on to our regular meeting, and as again, we are live captioning our meetings, you know, there is a protocol for how we do this, so I'm being repetitive, but we are now live captioned again for this meeting. So to those present, please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open the webpage with the live captioning. So with that, at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for June 25, 2024. Was there a misstatement on a date in the high school one? Yes, I misstated, said June 24 when I intended to say June 25. So please.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's June 25.
So what, so this one then says June 25, never mind. Well, I guess that shows I'm paying attention to dates. Just don't know which one is which. All right, so June 24, please accept my apologies for that misread. For the record, we will acknowledge that all board members present during the public hearing are also present for the governing board meeting. With that, I'd like us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Dr. Thor, would you lead us in that, please?
The United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have some substitutions this evening. We have Dr. Paula Livingston, VP of Academic Affairs, sitting in for Dr. Ray Rivera of Australia Mountain Community College. We have Ms. Mel Valenzuela, Assistant Director of Communications for Ms. Lindsay Wilson, Associate Vice President, Senior of External Affairs. We have Mr. David Bowman, Associate General Counsel, sitting in for Ms. Janice Falkenberg, our MCC General Counsel. Thank you, people, for your substitution and your presence. Moving on, there are no student life reports this evening, which is always disappointing that we don't have a student report, but we'll move on, and now we have the Faculty Executive Council Report, Ms. Stacy Smith. Good evening.
Secretary Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Executive Council, and guests. My name is Stacy Smith, I'm a residential faculty member at Paradise Valley Community College and the Faculty Executive Council President. I'd like to start this evening with a pop quiz. Don't worry, it's multiple choice. Here's the question, what is faculty scholarship? Is it A, original research conducted by a faculty member? Is it B, research and publication done only at major universities with unlimited funding? Or is it C, knowledge that is acquired and shared by faculty through research, synthesis, practical application, and teaching? Give a moment, probably guessed the answer is C. Faculty scholarship is broad in its meaning and expansive in its reach, and what I'm going to be talking about tonight. Ernest Boyer from the Carnegie Foundation published a report, Scholarship Reconsidered, that challenged the traditional definition of faculty scholarship, emphasizing that scholarship is not limited to original research, but includes activities like synthesizing knowledge, applying knowledge to real-world problems, and effectively teaching others. MCCCD has embraced this view of scholarship as exemplified by the funding of professional growth, particularly summer projects and sabbaticals. In fact, the Faculty Professional Growth Committee is now receiving over 2,000 requests each year for various types of professional growth funding, which speaks to faculty's commitment to our students and our disciplines. Faculty's foremost duty is to pursue the truth. We devote ourselves to rigorous inquiry even when the questions are difficult and the answers uncomfortable. This summer, Professor Kevin Healy from Mesa Community College is conducting a summer project called Star Wiggles, analyzing stellar spectra with Python. I had to look up some of those words because I don't know what that is, right? Through the detailed analysis of starlight, including the subtle spectral shifts caused by motion, his work aims to uncover the physical conditions and histories of stars, including the sun, and to develop technological tools to analyze stellar spectra. Not only will this work contribute to the field of astronomy, students get to learn from Professor Healy's expertise and apply this research to their studies. If you're a Star Trek fan like I am, then you know the quote, "To boldly go where no man has gone before." Professor Healy is boldly seeking the truth in places our students may never seek, but will get to experience in the classroom. Faculty are also bound by our responsibility to continuously develop and improve our scholarly competence. Our work must be shaped by the standards of our disciplines and reviewed by peers who understand the complexity of our fields. Professor Christy Miller, Anthropology Faculty from Australia Mountain Community College, recently returned from the UNESCO World Heritage Site of Al-Balid in Oman. Professor Miller was the Lab Director for Excavations at this historical site, and now is analyzing previously unevaluated ceramics and glass bracelets to gain a better understanding of global trade networks and to examine female occupied spaces within the region. Professor Miller is working with the Land of Frankincense Museum, which I find fascinating, and sharing data with the British Museum. And ultimately, Professor Miller will share these findings with peers for review at professional conferences. Faculty also model academic integrity in a way we transparently and courageously conduct and disseminate research. Professor Sean Whitcomb's recent sabbatical project examined equity and access to urban green spaces in Phoenix. Professor Whitcomb evaluated public parks using metrics such as size, tree canopy cover, and recreational facilities, and used spatial analysis tools to assess whether proximity to quality parks can be predicted by demographic factors such as median income and ethnicity. This work not only addresses an important public policy concern, but also demonstrates integrity in practice by applying objective, data-driven methods to investigate social inequities. As scholars, faculty challenge ourselves to continuously grow by questioning assumptions, exploring new methodologies, and engaging in dialogue. Enter Professor Patrick Finn's upcoming sabbatical project. The process and the product, writing and teaching fiction. Through the completion of his book-length short fiction manuscript, Where You Won't Meet the Girl of Your Dreams, Professor Finn continues to refine his craft as a writer, building on his work that has already earned national publication. Simultaneously, he's developing a new syllabus for Introduction to Writing Fiction that integrates his evolving understanding of narrative construction. Professor Finn's commitment to fostering student creativity while modeling the ongoing development essential to teaching excellence is exactly what faculty scholarship is about. Finally, faculty recognize that meaningful scholarship requires freedom. Freedom to choose our focus, pursue findings wherever they lead, and share those findings without fear or restriction. Academic freedom protects our ability to explore and expand the boundaries of knowledge, and it empowers us to make meaningful contributions to society, as each of these examples highlight. I would like to thank Sylvia Enriquez, Administrative Assistant for Faculty Professional Growth, for providing me this data and for supporting faculty scholarly pursuits over the past years. I also would like to thank you, the Governing Board, for your continued support in funding faculty scholarship. Broadly defined, because faculty scholarship at its best is not a solitary act, it is a shared endeavor. It's a promise faculty make to be curious with our inquiry, to seek the truth, to make an impact, and to work with pride. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. And now we'll move to our adjunct faculty group report, Ms. Boja.
Good evening. Good evening, good evening, excuse me, Secretary Sullivan, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, and members of Shared Governance Executive Council, and our guests. June is one of our quieter months as our adjunct reps take the month off and get a month where we don't have to have a meeting and don't have major involvements. That said, we do still have some work going on, and my schedule has been quite busy with committee work and other meetings with different shareholders in different places, in point, even with Jess tonight for a quick five-minute meeting to catch up on some business we'd talked about several months ago. So I'm always looking for opportunities, and sometimes they come to you when you are waiting for a meeting to start. So we have finished our, or finalized our adjunct faculty handbook. It's currently being reviewed by, actually, it's been reviewed by our board and other stakeholders, and it's been moved on to the Provost and the Chancellor for review. Our bylaws have been approved by our board and have been forwarded for review to the Provost and HR. Last month, I mentioned to you that we are looking into identifying adjunct faculty working spaces around the district. We are now being assisted in our research by the VPAs and the deans. They've brought it to all of the VPAs and deans around the district who are helping to find the spaces so that we can find out where exactly they exist and share that with our adjunct faculty so that they know that they have places that they can take a student to go have a meeting or conduct business in whatever way they need to. I'm also sitting on the Shared Governance Council for Teaching, Learning, and Classroom Work Group. We're dealing with some CTL and MCLI research right now. And we're also, I'm also on a subcommittee for the Advisory Budget Council, working on a deep dive into the institutional data, support data to share with ABC. We are also just getting ready to start revising some of the AFPG SharePoint information. We're trying to do all of the busy work that we don't get to do during the year, so that's been my month in terms of that. I also worked on the SharePoint site to update content and repair broken links for the adjunct faculty group. And at the beginning of July, we'll be welcoming four new representatives to our group. We have Elizabeth Stuff for Paradise Valley, Ray Sia for Glendale, Matthew Chiarello for Mesa, and Brenda Horn for Scottsdale. In addition, with helping them with their onboarding, we plan to address research and updating the college websites in the coming year, because we realized that we have some broken links for adjunct-related issues at the individual colleges. So we're, want to make sure that all of that is current, and we're going to make that a task for our reps to look into some of that and figure out what is missing, what is broken, and how we can handle things. We'll also be putting forth calls to replace committee members for any district committees that have adjuncts who stepped down or retired, and make sure that everybody's up to date with an adjunct representative on our district committees. My report tonight is brief. I thank you for letting me come and share with you what we have been up to. Thank you always for the continued support of our work, and I hope everybody has a peaceful summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, our staff representation update by Ms. April Rowland and Mr. Jason Rich. Welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Sullivan, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, and guests. My name is April Rowland, and I'm the co-president, one of the co-presidents of staff representation. Next slide, please. So this year, we had many accomplishments. A lot of staff members did brown bags and coffee talks with their staff reps and other staff members at each of their campuses, participated and contributed to new and shared governance models, system at campuses, campus events like president town halls and employee meetings, also participated in district town halls on Jeff family enhancements and expenditure limitation. Many hiring committees we were on, such as VPs, VCs, and CIO and the Chief of Police. And just a few committees that we are a part of, budgeting benefits, SGE-C and the strategic planning. We were a part of RFP reviews, such as the Wellness Incentive Credit and the Student CRM. And next slide, please. Staff representation submitted its largest policy package yet to the Staff Policy Collaboration Team, SPCT, covering proposed improvements for probationary periods, flexible work, employee relations, executive leave, and other cleanup efforts. Staff reps also worked with other committees to review and revise even more policies like charter high school staff, problem-solving processes, performance success evaluations, and employee investigations. We also improved sources on website for all staff based on common questions and concerns. And we offered monthly newsletters, which produced and distributed to keep staff informed. Our internal accomplishments, next slide, please. Our bylaws, we added a new section on conduct, addressed other issues and process refinements, as well as internal process improvements. We introduced an annual staff representation strategic plan, streamlined new meetings for the agendas and meeting patterns, and refined onboarding, training, and resources of staff reps.
So one of our charges as staff representation is to gather input from our staff so we can represent them effectively, and one of the charges in our bylaws is to do an annual survey. So we recently did our survey for this year, and we had a record number of responses, more than doubling what we got in the previous year. And you can see there's been some shift in concerns over the years. We will be working, we have a great team across the system helping us review all of the open text responses. We had, out of those 902, there were actually 1,127 open text responses that we're looking through, we're theming, and looking for other insights, and we'll be providing a more in-depth report early in the fall to all of you with what the responses were. One of the top responses that we have been able to grade so far is, has been over 120 responses about flexible work options. And we're going to take what we learned this year and try and work with our institutional research teams to try and step it up even more next year and get more value out of it. Next slide, please. At the, on July 1st, we'll be rolling over to our next staff representation group. We're having 25 new reps coming in and 25 returning reps continuing on, so we have a good balance of makeup of new and returning, as well as 25 exempt and 25 non-exempt, so we have a good balance of perspective there as well. Chandler Gilbert and Rio Slado had full rosters and been close to filling up the other ones with a few vacancies that are still available at their locations. We have Senator at East Campus, which basically helps manage the things going on there, and they meet at the Senate and discuss higher-level things, and we filled all of those seats. And we want to say thank you to the 140 reps who have served in the previous year since this group was stood up, and the 48 who served this year that won't be returning. Next slide, please. We want to take a moment to thank President Bitter Smith and Ms. Sullivan, and all of the other presenters that came to our recent onboarding training for their participation and support in that effort. Next slide, please. And we want to give a big thank you to the Governing Board, all of the Shared Governance Executive Council for enabling staff so that we are able to support our students. They're a big part of all that we do.
As I stand here tonight at my final Governing Board meeting as co-president of staff representation, I am filled with deep gratitude and a sense of reflection. It has truly been an honor of a lifetime to serve in this role. Not only is it advocate for our dedicated staff, but it's a bridge between voices, perspectives, and possibilities across the district. This work has not been easy. We have faced organizational changes, budget constraints, and moments of real uncertainty. But in those moments, I've seen strength from classified professionals who deeply care about their work, from college leaders who listen even when the conversations are hard, and from this body who continues to invest in collaboration when time and resources are stretched thin. This work is rooted in people, not titles, and I've learned that process is in an institution like ours is not made alone, but through collective action, collaboration, and shared governance. And sometimes through emergency surgery. Last spring, when I thought nothing could cut into my schedule more than committee work, boom! My appendix decided, says, "I'm out." So if I ever seemed a little lighter in spirit during negotiations, just know I was also literally one organ down. But in true Maricopa fashion, we adjusted, pivoted, and carried on, appendix or no appendix. On a more serious note, I would like to express my sincere thanks to the Governing Board. Thank you for your thoughtful leadership and for honoring the importance of shared governance. Your commitment to hearing all voices, including those of our staff, has made a real difference. You have modeled what intentional leadership looks like, and I'm truly grateful. To Chancellor Gonzalez, thank you for your steadfast support and your openness to engaging with staff. Under your leadership, shared governance has been more than just a principle. It's been a practice rooted in mutual respect and true collaboration. To the college presidents, thank you for your willingness to listen, to adapt, and to work in the spirit of collaboration. I have learned so much from each of you, and I value the candid conversation and mutual respect that helps shape better outcomes for our staff. To our executive leaders, thank you for your accessibility and support behind the scenes. Your commitment to policy refinement, operational clarity, and staff well-being has been instrumental to the work we've done together. To our faculty colleagues, I want to offer a heartfelt thank you for the collaboration we've shared, especially during our joint presentation on shared governance. I look forward to seeing that partnership continue to grow in the years ahead. Together, we're modeling a united front that can advocate for all employees. And I would like to, and I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank some incredible individuals who've been a part of this leadership journey. To Calvin Duvall, thank you for walking beside me during my first year as co-president. Your guidance and encouragement helped me find my footing and voice. To Shannon Manji, thank you for your steady leadership and your example as past co-president. You've always led with heart and integrity, and I've learned so much from you. To Jason Rich, thank you for being my current co-president. Your humor, dedication, and balance have made an incredible, have been invaluable during my final year. I couldn't have asked for a better partner. And welcome to Tony Mo, who will be stepping into this role. Tony, I'm so excited for the wisdom, perspective, and energy you'll bring to this work. You've got a village behind you, and I'll be cheering you on, and may the force be with you. And to my family, thank you for your patience, your love, and your support through countless meetings, tough conversation, and late-night emails. Your belief in me has carried me through this journey. One of the most unexpected blessings of this role is that it inspired me to return to school and pursue my master's degree in educational leadership through Northern Arizona University. I am proud to say I have just three classes left, and I'll be graduating December 12th of this year. Serving as co-president has helped me find my purpose, and now I'm taking that with me to the next chapter of my career. And finally, to the incredible staff across our district. We hear you, we see you, and we support you. Your work is the heartbeat of this institution, and your experiences matter. I encourage you, be involved, show up, speak up. Know that your voice not only belongs in the room, but it is needed in this room. When staff engage, change becomes possible. As I transition back to my campus role, I do so with renewed hope. Hope that we will continue to expand participation in shared governance. Hope that collaboration remains central to every decision we make, and hope that the spirit we've nurtured here will only grow stronger. I leave you with one of my favorite quotes by John Quincy Adams. "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." Each of you has the capacity to lead from where you are. Please keep showing up for yourselves, for each other, and for the future of Maricopa. Thank you for this opportunity to serve. Thank you for trusting in me, and thank you for making the past two years so meaningful. Maricopa, appendix removed, spirit intact, I'm grateful beyond words. Thank you very much.
In addition to the endeavor with her, and her master's degree, she also has rescued a puppy recently. Staff representation as a token of thanks has created an honorary donation to the rescue and provided a present for your rescue puppy.
Thank you.
So we want to thank April for her dedication over the last two years as she moves into her past president's role. Next slide, please. And as well, we want to thank Shannon Manji for her years of service. As a past president, she'll be moving away as April takes over that role. Next slide, please. And we're going to invite our district office reps to come up and do their spotlight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matthew Flores, and I am the District Office Staff Rep Senator. With me is Kaylee Howe, who is our staff rep for Human Resources. Kaylin Rolls, who is our staff rep for Human Resources. Is Jordan Woodruff, our staff rep for IT. We also have Nancy Sanders, who is our staff rep for our Small Business Division. Fortunately, was I here. We are our staff reps for the 2024-25 academic year. I thank everybody for their commitment and their influence for serving as staff rep for district office. It has been a crazy year to deal with, but it's been a pleasure nonetheless to navigate through the ever-changing environment that things have been going on. With that, next slide, please. I do wish to introduce the new staff reps that will be going with this changing of the guard. Myself and Kaylee Howe will be returning staff reps for this next year, for the 2025-26 year. The new reps coming on will be Veronica Moreno, who will be coming from our Small Business Division, as a small business analyst. And Jenny Willett, who will be coming from Human Resources, that is actually one of our virtual employees. So she will provide insight regarding remote work and virtual policies when we go through discussions regarding staff rep going into the next. Next slide, please. So knowing that this is the wrap-up of the year, we didn't want to overstep staff rep regarding the changes that have gone on for the year. So instead, we wanted to focus on what our mission and intent will be going into the next academic year. So our first item will be building a stronger, consistent communication with DO leadership. With everything that's been going on for this year, from the implementation of shared governance to the list of executive orders that have been coming on and a whole bunch of things from there to now, there's been a lot. Decisions need to be made, actions need to be taken, need to be up to date with everything that was going on. What we want to ensure moving forward is not to get left behind with everything that's been going on, and to make sure that we are well-informed with everything that's been changing, make sure that we are up to, up to date now only with our knowledge and our resources, but also to make sure how things are moving along, so in case concerns are brought to our attention, regardless of where they come from, we at least have a basic understanding of, a solid foundation of how to be able to proceed, how to reach out, things of that nature. Just to continue acting as a proactive voice for, between staff and DO executives, as the idea of staff representation is we represent all staff, from the frontline serving, serving students, whether it be from in-person, remote, virtual, to our executive-level staff. to our executive-level staff, we represent all staff. So we want to make sure that we become an outlet and a resource to all the staff with communication and coordinating those efforts. Make sure that everything is kept in check, if you will. We wish to increase our monthly brown bag sessions to deepen engagement and surface staff concerns. I believe at this point for this year, it's been more of a bi-monthly basis than it has been, which is great, but we want to do more. We want to do better with our monthly brown bag sessions. So in that respect, we want to make sure that collect as much concerns that staff have regarding ever-changing motives, have an understanding of what's going on moving into the future so we know how to be able to coordinate our brown bag sessions moving forward. Also, we should promote transparency, collaboration, and share problem-solving so that way we can help engage staff in changing environment that's been going on armed above potentially new issues that are coming up or providing them of resources that they may not be available or may have gotten lost in the noise. Such as, an example, we introduced the Personify app from human resources to all Maricopa staff, which was a great benefit. But one of the things that we introduced as our brown bag session was the employee assistance program to help deal with mental and emotional health, to help deal with feelings of feeling overwhelmed, burnout, and fatigue, especially with everything that's been going on. We want to make sure that, yes, we do have other things that we are introducing, but we want to help ensure that they also are aware of other benefits that we also offer. So we want to continue that idea for moving forward into the next year. The last thing that we want to focus on is staff representation and continuing to make an impact on the experience of staff at district office. With so much that's been going on, it's understandable that while one may be interested in staff representation, they may feel anxious to commit for possible fear or possible awareness that more work or changing demands may be coming up in the future that they don't want to overcommit if they are aware other things are going on, which is understandable. But we want to help reassure everyone that they do have a voice, they do, they can make an impact no matter where they are, no matter what they do. It's just a matter of raising that awareness and increasing our influence to help share what they can be able to do and showcase that to others. That's, there is one other thing I do wish to share, but I'll leave it over to anyone else if they wish to share anything. In that case. The only other thing I will close out with is I would like to thank Kaylin Rolls, Jordan Woodruff, and Nancy Sanders.
You're doing great.
I'll pay for that later. And Nancy Sanders for their dedicated commitment, their insights and influence that they have provided this past year as we start moving forward towards the next academic year, all for everything that you've done. We hope to carry that on and make it even stronger moving forward as the next academic year. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment about April. She talked to me a little bit before this meeting, and she told me that she was very shy to begin with and didn't like public speaking. And she had a family member who was saying, "Go, you've got it." Well, I'd say your speech and your closing remarks were remarkable, and your family members should be very proud of you, and we are very proud of you. But most importantly, I hope you're proud of yourself. So thank you for your work. Good job. We do have one emeritus distinction, Dr. John Kelly from Residential Faculty. Dr. Kelly will be recognized at the December 2025 celebration the Provost's Office is putting together to recognize all our emeritus recipients. So congratulations to Dr. Kelly. And now the chancellor's report, Dr. Gonzalez. Before you go on vacation, are you ready to give us a report?
I'm ready to do this, Secretary Sullivan. Thank you very much.
You're very good.
Secretary Sullivan, members of the board, and everyone in attendance here or virtually, please provide this update. It will be brief tonight. For enrollment, the summer 2025, the fourth weekend of the semester is up 1.4% from this time last year. And for fall 2025, 10 weeks out before the semester starts, headcount is up 17.5%. So we're hoping to hold on to that number as much as possible as we approach the fall semester. For legislative update, the government relations team has quickly responded to several state budget proposals in recent weeks. We are advocating for the version passed out, that passed out of the Senate that includes millions of dollars of support for community college students. We ask for supporters to join us in that effort before the fiscal year ends on June 30th, so please stay tuned. And for other information tonight, before I get to some thank yous here, I, as you all, bless you. As you all know, I held listening sessions throughout the system over the course of the past academic and fiscal year. They were successfully completed at the district office in all 10 colleges. And after adding up the number of attendants who were either in person or participating virtually, we had over 1,000 employees attend those 11 different sessions, or 11 different meetings, 44 different sessions, right? Okay. Key themes from each session were summarized and were shared with system leaders, and a comprehensive, system-wide summary was developed to reflect overarching insights. This summary was reviewed by the Shared Governance Executive Council this morning, in fact, which agreed to convene a small group to identify opportunities already underway that align with some of the feedback, areas where immediate action can be taken, also that we refer to as low-hanging fruit opportunities, and then feedback themes that require a longer-term strategic approach to address. The system summary and next steps will be shared with all employees when we all return in August. Of course, I will be sharing these with the board as well so that you can see what was communicated through those. And I want to thank all of the employees who participated in those. And I'm thinking about how we come back and follow up on this and some in-person opportunities. So we'll be working with college leadership and figuring out how to do that in a, maybe a briefer format rather than the number of sessions that we had, but we'll get there. Ramona, I thought I saw her earlier. Oh, there she is. Ramona, you're back there behind Kim. Didn't see you. Ramona, I want to thank you for your service as FEC president and really hope that you enjoy the immense amount of free time that will now be in your hands. I also want to welcome Matt Jolly from Gateway Community College as the incoming FEC president-elect. Matt and I had an opportunity to work together at Gateway, and he actually served as the faculty senate president. So we're kind of in familiar roles here again, Matt, so I'm looking forward to this opportunity. As we heard, April is on her way out, and I want to thank April as the co-president for our staff representation group, April. We appreciate your leadership. So both April and Ramona, you're going to be missed, but you're always welcome to come back and let us know how the good times are out there. And I also want to welcome Tony Moke from Glendale, who is incoming staff representation co-president. Tony, both Tony and Matt joined our SGC seat meetings in their official capacities for the first time today. And it was a celebratory one and also one that summarized much of the work that we did this past year. And I think they both saw that we get into this room and we roll up our sleeves and we get to work. So looking forward to working with both of you here moving forward. So Secretary Sullivan, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. With that, we're going to move now to citizens interim, and I want to remind everyone, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during the portion, or this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on the subsequent agenda or dealt with in another manner. Presenting concerns to the board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with calm and respect. Use of derisive or insulting language or the direction of remarks that defame, attack, or harass an individual may serve as cause for the board's president or secretary to direct that the speaker immediately conclude his or her remarks. We don't expect ever any of that, but just for the record, I'm making note. So I have received a request for citizens interim speaking, and that is from Mr. Morgan Hassel, if I'm pronouncing that, excuse me. Okay, please, Ms. Raisel, your time at the podium. We, you have three minutes once you approach the podium, and we'll go from there. Ms. Macias, will you help us keep track of time? Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hassel. Three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm from, I'm from, I'm actually from Mesalado, but I'm also from Mesa.
Okay.
But I'm, I got a situation with SAPD. I've probably been put under academic suspension, and I shouldn't have been. There's a glitch going on with the computer system, and it's pointing to something with my withdrawal. It's not seeing all my transfer credits. And it should be, even though it's on the system. Right now, and it's still showing me as academic suspension. And I got the timeline here, if anybody wants to see it. But I just want to bring this to your attention because I know that if I'm having problems with it, other people have problems with it as well. They just don't, they just don't have a. All right, but I can tell everybody's attention. I'm bigger, but I'm just working to your attention right now because it may be the computer glitch. A month's time should be enough time to fix it. Before the fall semester begins. So because, you know, if this continues, you know. Have you seen the timeline? You're going to start getting that because it started out with, we give you financial aid, and about too much later, it appears with, you're on financial suspension. And you know, and to me, that's not right. And I talked to Amway, and I talked to some other people around the mountain, and they're like, "Well, we're going to fix it," and it never happened. And to me, that's not right, you know. And I just want to get your attention.
Thank you for bringing that forward. So now we move on to consideration of the consent agenda. And for the record, I'd like to make note that item 24 is not present or will not be present for our consideration under the consent agenda this evening. It's been pulled for further discussions. But beyond that, do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda? Being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda unless item 24 is presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries by a vote of six-zero. So also, on the consent agenda, we're the adopted version of the budgets. So with that, board members, please remain after the meeting so you can put your signature on the documents, please. Moving to then the non-consent action items. First one is approval to suspend implementation of the new residential faculty staffing model described in Article 14 1.1 and 14 1.2 of the Residential Faculty Agreement for Academic Year 25-26. Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Being none, is there a motion to suspend implementation of the new residential faculty staffing model as stated above?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion on the motion? With that, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, by a vote of six-zero, the approved, we've approved the suspension of the implementation of the new residential faculty staffing model described as noted. Our second item is the second read and adoption of staff policy manual revisions. Are there any questions from board members on this item? Being none, is there a motion to adopt the staff policy manual revisions as noted? Deletions, one, for charter high school employment policy alignment, and two, CEU stipend policy revisions effective July 1, 2025. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. You guys are a good team this evening. All those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, by a vote of six-zero, the motion carries. So now we'll move on to first read and information items. Number one, employment and separations report, April 19, 2025 through May 16, 2025. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? None, we'll move on to monitoring reports. The budget analysis report, Fund One, general unrestricted fund for the 11 months ending 5/31/2025. Board members, are there any comments or questions? Being none. Wow. That was, do I get the record now?
No.
Okay, well done. That was really quick. Anyway.
Always belong to Tom.
Yes, that's probably true, Dr. Neri. All right, with that, then we'll move on to community linkages. So just bear with us for a few more minutes, and we'll move on. Ms. Bother, I'll start with you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I started, we started out with the the College Foundation Board Meeting and Retreat was all day long. It was bittersweet because we said goodbye to Brian Spicker, our now-retired president and CEO, and we are so grateful for Judy Sanchez for stepping up and filling the interim role. We get ready for our, to start hearing about our fall fundraising efforts, which were discussed at the board meeting. And then we have June 2nd, Ray Sullivan and I are serving on the Audit and Finance Committee. And it's, we get a lot of input from executive leadership, but we also have three members of the public who join us and who have backgrounds in finance and accounting and auditing. And I just want you all to know that, you know, we're so grateful for people in the community who are willing to serve in that capacity and really help and advise us and just look over everything that we're doing. And then I was with many of our board members, got the pleasure of attending the Rio Salado High School equivalency graduation ceremony. And it, I don't have to tell anyone here how joyful and wonderful it was, but gosh, looking up into the audience and just seeing like the families of the graduates, especially like their children, how proud they were, and they were jumping up and down, and applauding was so moving. And just a wonderful event. It was, it was really, really special. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
I too got to go to the Rio Salado graduation, which was wonderful. I attended, along with a couple of other people, the Arizona Career Pathways graduation, which also was wonderful. They do such a great job with wraparound services. I'm so thankful that we have them as part of Gateway and serving some of our students from around the district. On last Friday night, I got to dress up and took my husband, dress up in my great steampunk outfit, better than the Richard Simmons look-alike contest, and went to see the Clockmaker's Daughter at Paradise Valley Community College, and it was spectacular. It was so wonderful. So my congratulations to those students because they did a great, great job. And then in addition to that, I just wanted to talk about a couple of other things that happened throughout this last month. One was I went to do a presentation for the Buckeye Union High School District Board. And while I was there, the ASBO, which is the Arizona Association of School Business Officials, presented an award to the business office from Buckeye Union High School District for their internship program with Australia Mountain Community College. And Mahai was one of those interns, and they hired him. And he's been a tremendous addition to the team. This is from the executive director of the business office at Buckeye Union. So they have hired a couple, they have another intern that they're working with right now, and they are very pleased with the internship program that they have with Australia Mountain Community College. So that was great. And then I also had the opportunity to go to the And then I also had the opportunity to go to the Office of Economic Opportunity Conference that was held last week. And I got to hang out with Daniel Barahas and his staff and it was wonderful. And it was great to, great to meet, to be with Daniel and all the staff and meet all kinds of people that are involved in workforce development efforts around the state. So it was a good, it was been a good month. And that's my report.
Did you take pictures of your clock?
Yes, I have. Yes. My steampunk thing?
We, we heard about it. So I wanted to just briefly describe it because everyone's really interested in, in this because it sounded phenomenal.
But oh my gosh, it's, it was phenomenal. It was about a clockmaker who lost his daughter. So he made a person to replace her that was supposed to be like a machine. And to get her to work, he had to wind her up. And so she, it was so funny because she, you know, she wasn't a real person. So things were very different to her. But she went outside and then she fell in love. But she couldn't be in love because somebody would have to wind her up.
Well, that, that, I won't say anything. It was just really tempting. Anyway, talk about your costume.
Oh, my costume. What you were asking about? Oh, it was a hat.
A Rolling Stones song, you can add. Didn't wind me up.
Oh.
Okay.
So I'll show you pictures. Sorry. Sorry. Cause I went on and on about the play. The play was so good though. Play was much better than my costume.
Okay, we're going to move on. You can keep such as rest. Yeah, okay. We're, we're, we're moving. Ms. Smith.
I don't have a report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Thor.
Do I have to follow?
Okay.
Some level. It's been a long year.
You didn't call on Dr. Narini.
Now, I'm going by the order on, on my sheet because I'm following the rules.
And I'm not here.
And, and he's not here. Okay. Well, then I'm skipping you. I'll go back to you then, Dr. Narini. Let's just move on to Dr. Narini and then I'll conduct you, Dr. Thor. See, I mean, do you want to see the order that you're, okay. Dr. Narini?
I have nothing to report except for my deep and profound disappointment. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. But have a good trip. Where are you going?
Far, far away.
Do we need to wind you up?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. No, no. Sorry. Now, now, wrong question. Yeah, okay. Wrong question. Dr. Thor.
Okay. I have to follow that. Okay.
Less control.
Yeah, yeah, that's over. Okay, Dr. Thor.
On June 2nd, I attended along with Dr. Narini and Donna Davis, the Arizona Career Pathways graduation. And this was the first time that I have attended that event, but it certainly will not be the last. And I want to share that Mayor Kate Gallego spoke and she was heaping praise on the Maricopa Community Colleges and our partner, Arizona Career Pathways. And the student speaker who recently completed her RN training, shared her very emotional and inspirational life story. And announced that she had, has been hired by the Mayo Clinic. So stories like these are a great reminder of why we do what we do. On June 18th, I also attended Rio Salado's High School Equivalency graduation and was given the opportunity to make some remarks on behalf of the board. This is always one of my favorite events of the year. And in fact, this was the 27th high school equivalency graduation that I have attended in my role as president of Rio Salado College and as a governing board member. And nearly 200 graduates walked and has been noted to a cheering crowd. And finally, I would like to acknowledge the passing of two legendary Maricopans, Dr. William Wector and Dr. John Cordova. Dr. Wector served as Vice Chancellor of Human Resources from 1984 to 2000, a tenure of 16 years. Making him the longest-serving Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. He was a positive, happy, action-oriented, accomplished man. He was an important part of Chancellor Paul Elsner's cabinet. The team that developed Maricopa into the great district that it is today. He was Maricopa's representative to the League for Innovation in the community college and he owned his job. As an example, when I flew in to be interviewed by Dr. Elsner for the presidency of Rio Salado. He not only met me at the airport, he met me at the gate.
Oh.
Now, that of course
Wow.
was obviously a long time ago when you could still go to the gates. You could imagine what an impression that made on me about Maricopa. After retirement, he continued to care deeply about the district. In October of 2022, he copied me on an email he sent to a large list of friends. It read, regarding the Maricopa Community Colleges Board election, I highly recommend Kelly Butler. With Kelly's election, we will have a solid seven members who are rational, caring and competent. And that was the last email that I received from him. Dr. John Cordova was the founding president of Paradise Valley Community College and later the president of South Mountain Community College. Dr. Cordova was way ahead of his time with his belief that every employee who had contact with students had the opportunity to teach them and to help them learn. Years later, the rest of us would catch up when the learning college concept swept the nation. Proposing that colleges engage students as full partners in the learning process. And that college activities should be defined by the needs of the learners. And John knew that all along. John was a spiritual man, a seeker of universal truth and a caring and compassionate human being. I was honored in January 2022 to speak at the Paradise Valley, at Paradise Valley Community College. When the Dr. John Cordova Plaza was dedicated, a well-deserved and long overdue honor. I am so grateful that he was given this recognition during his lifetime. Both of these great men will be profoundly missed. That, my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. You saved the best. That was very nice. Thank you. So my turn, I attended a lot of meetings, the Audit and Finance Committee, a tax hearing. Certainly enjoyed those opportunities. No, truly I did. And then we have a lot of support from our tax, major tax taxpayers. And I think that came out and was apparent in that meeting. So not only were you very well prepared for that meeting. The ability to answer the questions and to engage with those major taxpayers was pretty significant. So thank you for your leadership in those arenas. Also got to attend the AD graduation at Rio. And as I was looking at all the folks, I keep thinking about all the work in my past life we did in workforce development that led so many people to that place. So it brings back a lot of nostalgia for me, but thank you for that opportunity. And then I attended the system-wide planning meeting for strategic planning. The other pieces I did, the staff represent, staff presentation with Ms. Bitter Smith. Also several AGB meetings and AACT. But as I'm thinking about moving forward, I thought about all the people that I've interacted with through all these meetings, all of you. And again, your professional presentations, your thoughtful contributions are very important and help inform all of our work. And you truly are partners with us and it's becomes more and more apparent each time we have the opportunity to work together. So as I'm thinking about closing out this academic year in Ms. Bitter Smith's place, and I'm sorry she wasn't here for this evening. And she is as well. She's been texting me an update and she's not finished with her other meeting. So unfortunately she won't be here for the ending of this one. A couple of things, it's been a tough year in many ways, but it's also been a very good year with all the work that you accomplished and all the students that we've been, had the occasion to meet and, and shake hands with and smile at and listen to families cheer and recognize all your good work and, and all that. But I, there's a word that I'd like to leave out there for all of us as we contemplate the challenges that we faced and the ones ahead of us. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't, but what's important for all of us is that we embrace grace. I think that sometimes we get very mired in the controversies or the risks or the what's wrongs. And in those discussions, which are important to all of us and how we do our work. I'd like to leave us to think about grace as we move into our next month and come together again in August and hope that we can bring that with us as we face the future challenges. Because they're not getting any easier and they're very uncomfortable. And bring, and they bring out the conflict within all of us. And sometimes the way we get through conflict is through collaboration, through conversation. But I'm going to say we also get through it with grace. So that's my challenge for all of us, including myself. You know, I get sidetracked sometimes and I'm grateful for all of you and I wish you wonderful vacate, well, if you get to take vacations, time off until you have to see us again. Because you know, the board historically doesn't hold a business meeting throughout July. We'll be back in August. Unless there's some emergency that will require our attention. But again, for me, may you all enjoy yourself and let's return with grace for and towards each other in that work. With that, we will resume on August 12th with agenda review via WebEx as far as we know right now. And then resume our regular standing board meeting on August 26, 2025. And though I can't beat the record of Dr. Narini or even Ms. Bitter Smith, I am going to adjourn us at 7:40. And thank you everyone for your time and may you enjoy the rest of your summer.